Sorry about that. Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Suffolk Public School Board. Board members, first of all, thank you so much for your cooperation and your willingness to come and work this evening. As always, as has been the case since the pandemic started, I ask everyone who is in the chamber to remember to wear your mask. If you are uncomfortable with your mask and you need to step out and get some air, please do so. We understand. Just step outside of the chamber and outside of the building if you need to get some air. You may do so. That's what we ask you to do, but we ask you to follow CDC guidelines and COVID, our COVID protection rules and strategies while you're in the chamber. When we left our meeting, there are two announcements I'd like to make. First of all, I don't see the reporter from the Suffolk News Herald. We have asked for a retraction of the story. This is just in a way of business because there was an error. Dr. Gordon and I have not been charged with anything. As a matter of fact, there were three items that we were accused of, three things that we were accused of doing, and two were dismissed. That was not what was reported, and there was an error, and we have asked that it be retracted and the truth be told. The third thing is that we will make available for anyone who would like to know what the foyer council's opinion was in this matter. When people come into this chamber, whether they're coming from someplace else and the school board is in charge of the meeting, as chair of the meeting, my responsibility is to make sure that school board business is conducted in an orderly and respectful manner. I will continue to do that, and it does not matter who it is or where it is. There are rules that we follow, rules of conduct that we expect people to follow, whoever it is, and we will continue to conduct business in that way because that's what we're here for. We're going to be respectful, and we expect people who come in to be respectful and to make their point. We're going to respect them and listen to them, and we expect them to treat us in the same way. We thank you for coming this evening, and we're going to go on with the business of the evening. Board members, again, I put before you, we have one matter of business today, and that is the matter of looking at our budget priorities, which we established at the last meeting. We are not changing those. We're not changing the order of the priorities. But we did not, at the last meeting, as I sent to you when I polled the board to see about this meeting, there were no numbers with regard to what monies were being asked for each year from the city council. If you look at the second sheet in your handout, which has red numbers in it, and you look at the Q that you have at the bottom, it says, "City Council Previously Approved." Those numbers match the numbers that you were given when we had the joint meeting with the city council on February 3rd. They are the exact same numbers from the joint meeting on February 3rd with the city council. Those numbers were changed, as I understand it, after that meeting, but the last meeting that we had with city council, this was what they told us they were going to approve for us. So this is what we were given, and these are the numbers that we worked on, what they told us they were going to give us. We looked at all of what the cost would be, and we went from these numbers. So what we've asked the staff to do, what I've directed the Dr. Gordon do, is look at these numbers and try to get them as closely to what the city council said that they would give us in the next 10 years. We have never tried to be unreasonable. We tried to do what is in the best interest of the schools and what is in the best interest of the cities. We have, as of last night, helped to put Suffolk on the map in a very positive way. We speak of the bad news, and it was interesting to me that CNN announced for the nation to hear how well Suffolk Public Schools was doing. Northern Shores Elementary School, eight olives. And the Nansman Borough, Mr. Ward back there, distinguished itself, and Dr. Gordon, Mrs. White, and the staff, and my favorite bunch of little folks in my borough, I work at that school when I'm allowed to go in there this year, I haven't been, but did an outstanding job. They are a blue ribbon school. That's not an easy thing to accomplish. Accomplish. It is national recognition, and we ought to be really, really proud of their accomplishments. That should have made the front page instead of a story that was filled with errors, but it didn't. So, before I go any further, let me do this. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Northern Shores is one of the schools also that's on our priority list. So, we're wanting that for more than just one school. We want that for a lot of schools because we believe that a lot of good things are going on in Suffolk. And we know that in order to have these kinds of things continue to go on in Suffolk, we need to have buildings where people can go and work and do a good job and be successful. And so we're looking at this plan today with that in mind. So what I did, getting back to, because I digress, but what I did getting back to this plan before us, is ask Dr. Gordon to get with our team, Mrs. Forsman, Mr. Napier, and whatever team members he thought were most important to this task, and tell them what we want. Look at these numbers and see how they can fit into our priorities. Again, our priority list has not changed. The order has not changed. Major Systems, Operations, John F. Kennedy, Northern Shores, College and Career Academy, Forest Glen, Elephant's Fork, John Yates, Kilby Shores, Nansman Parkway, and Nansman River High School Edition. Those are still our priorities in that order. Dr. Gordon and staff, we ask you to look at them and see what we can do with the total figure that we have. And surely I may have messed it up because on here it says it's $324,260,032 on this form. Now, as I added it up, it said 314, but that could be my error, not yours, and you all can tell me what it is, what it actually is, if there is an error. But this is what we tried to work closest to, to get the schools, to get the work done in the 10 years. We noticed on the change that the city had made, that all of the schools were backed up until 2027. Is that correct? This was a switch that was made after our February 3rd meeting, which of course was a concern of ours because nobody that we're working with will be on the council unless everybody sticks around, and we might not even be on the school board in 2027. So, we're making arrangements with people. We don't know whether they'll change. So, in other words, we need some of this stuff done now. It's a priority, and there's an urgent need because we don't want the roof and the ceilings and the wall on our schools to cave on our children. We want some things to happen. So here we are. Okay? We would like to know if you, as a board, would like the staff to go ahead, put the numbers in based on the totals that the city has given us in the agreement or in what they said they promised according to their plan, what they wrote, we could have. That's the question for the board. Would you like for the staff to put that information? Dr. Gordon, you have a comment?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Buck. So, as a part of the concern that Dr. Buck had discussed with staff is we were actually concerned with the board's proposal that we had voted on last month with the total amounts per year. And in fiscal year 2022, '23, for example, is 29 million, but in fiscal year '26, '27, that number rises to 93 million. So, we wanted to have an opportunity for the board to take a look at the same order of projects, but maybe to shift the years in which these projects actually occur to potentially provide a greater chance for the city to be able to fund these projects. Again, we do not want to change the order, but we need to take a look at the total cost of each project to determine the feasibility of getting it done within the same year. So that's kind of a good way to tee this up. We can fill in the numbers. We can always, even though you have the sheets in front of you, Mr. Napier and Ms. Forsman are here, along with myself, we can remind you all how much each project costs as you're discussing it. I do suggest that we go year by year with the concept being that we have design, build, and open, and depending on when projects are designed and when construction starts for that project during that fiscal year will determine the overall cost for that year. But the majority of our projects will expand over three years total when you include the design, build, and open portions.
And that's for building schools?
That's for building schools. Yes, ma'am.
Now, for the College and Career Academy, we're looking at two years. Is that correct?
Really, one.
One year. And Northern Shores, we're looking at two years.
Yes, ma'am.
And for Nansman River High School Edition, we're looking at two years.
Yes, ma'am.
But for the building of schools, we're looking at three years.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Yes, Board Member Storey?
So, let me clarify something in terms of my memory. So, in February, we got some numbers from city council, but the study that was done was given to us after that.
No, we had all of that in the same booklet at the same time. Here's the booklet that we had.
Okay, so, the study that you talked about the last time, and I think Ms. Jenkins talked about following the study, but our plan doesn't follow. What we're asking for doesn't follow the study. So I'm confused because it prioritized things, and you were saying that city council wasn't following the study, but ours doesn't follow the study in terms of priority either.
When we met, when the presenters presented the information, the story, I know that we were right in this chamber, and I think I was even sitting here, and we talked about the fact that John F. Kennedy was, if that's what you mean, that we talked about the fact that John F. Kennedy was in dire shape. We, again, walked through John F. Kennedy on legislative days. That was in, that was prior to this, was it not, in November, prior to this February study, we walked through that. And the mayor?
So, just let me say, I'm not talking about JFK.
No, no, no. I just want to finish what I'm saying. You asked a question. I just want to finish it, and then I'll go back to you. The mayor and the councilmen who walked through with us saw the condition of the school, and then we came back and we did the presentation in the council chamber on February 3rd. I said, "I don't understand how..." They said they looked at the roof, and they looked at some other things, and I said, "Water is coming through the walls and up through the floor. So I don't understand how you prioritize a school and not prioritize that one." And I remember distinctly, the consultant said, "We didn't look at that. We looked at roofs and air conditioning and so on and so forth." So there were some changes made then in our discussion. Now, Mrs. Storey, would you go ahead? Board Member Storey, you can finish your thoughts.
I'm not talking about JFK. I have no doubt that it's a high priority, but the rest of the, the rest of this does not follow the study. So, Northern Shores is like 18th in terms of priority. It wasn't even close to a priority.
Dr. Buck, can I address that?
Yes.
So, Ms. Storey, I'm going to give you the quick timeline that Dr. Buck was alluding to, as well as the CIP timeline. The CIP to the city is actually completed in December. The school board actually had submitted their CIP also in December. The facility study that we've been referring to had three major components that were listed. The Facility Completion Index, which you're referring to for rankings of the overall conditions of buildings. But what you also must consider is HVAC roof replacement and current costs it takes for the operation of the building. This is part of the reason why schools such as John F. Kennedy moved up. Another major component of the facility study was the total number of mobile units that are actually available at each school. This is part of the reason why Northern Shores was still places of priority for the school because it had been on the CIP for six or seven years, but kept being, nine years, I'm sorry, thank you, but kept being deferred. So, when you think about the study itself, you can't just look at the facility condition index. You have to look at the overall historical context of where the schools fell on the original CIP. You have to look at the overall building cost that it takes for us to properly maintain that building so that it is usable for students and staff, and of course, the overall total number of mobile units that we have. Part of the goal that the school board made very clear to me when I took this job was the goal of getting rid of mobile units at all of our schools. That is a part of the reason why schools such as Northern Shores is listed.
And let me, may I, may I just add this? With regard to Northern Shores, and I know there was an entity, there was a discussion quite some time ago about redistricting, and we might as well put that elephant on the table. In the Nansman Borough, and I'm glad my councilman is here because he lives in the area, in the Nansman Borough, there's a whole community that has already been rezoned to Creekside Elementary School, which is in the Sleepy Hole Borough. Whole community goes from the Nansman Borough, a mile and a half away from Northern Shores, to Creekside Elementary because there was not enough room to put them in Northern Shores. And they've been there for, I don't know, before I came on the board. And then, people, when we built Florence Bowser, were moved to Florence Bowser from Creekside. We got rid of the trailers. And now, on our list, is Nansman Parkway Elementary School up for construction. So if we just shifted people over at one point in time, one of the schools is up for demolition and reconstruction. So, the people shifted would have to be shifted again, as was the case with Mrs. Byron. You know better than I do, as was the case with Robinson and Southwestern and Pioneer and Southwestern, okay? So, we've done a lot of that back and forth and moving and around and whatever. The reality is, we need to bite the bullet and build the schools and fix the schools. And even with the addition to Northern Shores, we're still going to be just dealing with the children who are on, who are where they are. Are there any board members who have other questions? Because the question I think that I put out there for us to discuss is this. Do we want the staff to just go ahead and look at the total number and put the numbers in for us because they actually have the real data to know how much stuff costs without changing the priority? Are there any questions about that?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
When you put these numbers in, are we looking at numbers from the study that we had? I mean, how, where, I mean?
Well, see, the study was, and as the, as I think Dr. Gordon mentioned and might have been, the study was done and nothing was done last year.
Right.
So, the cost of everything has gone up since the study was done. That's, that's one. And then there are other things that were not considered, as Dr. Gordon explained, with the study. And then our priorities are different. So I think that the staff is going to have to consider that because if we just look at what we want, it's going to be more than the 300 and either 14 million or 324 million, depending on my adding, but it's going to be more. If we can get it within the boundaries of what the city indicated it had set aside over this period, then it would seem, and it can be a reasonable cost or reasonably close to this figure. I think that's what they're working on, or at least that was my charge.
Madam Chair, can I add to that, just from Ms. Johnson's question? And I want to be clear here that the facility study had options. There were options listed. Facility Study Meeting was on February 3rd. City Council approved their CIP on February 17th, two weeks later. And the concern that we have discussed since Ms. Forsman and Mr. Napier had presented this in August is that the two-week timeframe, nothing changed based on the discussion that we had on February 3rd. The other concern is, is that what did change from the prior year was the delay in every project that had previously been approved. And the delay was to start every project except for the operations center, which was pushed back one year, to 2027 at the earliest. And so, the school board's push that you all gave us, your action that you all gave us at our last meeting, preserved the order that we see on the worksheets that you have here. But the concern, again, just to be clear, is the total cost over years 2023 through 2029, and the last three years of this 10-year CIP, you know, right now, we don't have anything. And part of the discussion that the board had with staff, you know, and with each other, was that we really need to focus on our first five to seven years to get some of these projects done.
Right. And I understand, first of all, I know it's a study, and, and, you know, we, we use a study to come up with what we need to do and how we need to do it. We're not going to do it exactly, everything in this, you can't. There are options, and it's not the way it works. So, I guess my concern last time, and what I think we're doing today that I really hope we're doing, is that we come up with a way of not having a few of these years so expensive that we know that there's no way this, the city can do this. So, we need to get it in a more realistic balance somehow.
I think so too. I would agree.
Madam Chair?
Board Member Mayo, and then I'll take you. Oh, okay. Board Member Riddick?
I would like to know, what is the amount that the city has stated that they're willing to commit to us?
Look on your sheet, look on your sheet at the bottom.
Yeah, I'm looking at the sheet.
In the left-hand row, in the right-hand row, I'm sorry, at the bottom. 300 and either 14 million or 324 million, which is on this sheet.
And remember, Mr. Riddick, the original amount, I bet 324, that's before inflation. The highest amount it could go to is what we have on the sheet that the board did last month, where we could go all the way up to 415 million, depending on when these projects are completed.
Okay. Yes, Board Member Storey?
I'm glad you reminded me of the three different areas, Dr. Gordon. So, what was, where did Northern Shores, while in the deferred maintenance lineup?
Now, remember, the deferred maintenance, Ms. Storey, is the 3.575 million that we have to use for all 21 of our schools.
But I was just referring to the study.
Yep.
The study gives you the facilities conditions index. It doesn't give you a specific figure for each individual school unless the school needs roof replacement, unless the school needs HVAC. And if you remember from Ms. Forsman's presentation, $14 million is what we're looking at for HVAC and roof replacement over the next, what, four to five years, Ms. Forsman?
Yes.
This is part of the reason why, if you look at the top of the sheet that the board approved, while the staff has suggested for major systems repairs, replacements, while we have it increasing by $2 million every two years, because we know that we have to take care of the $14 million in HVAC and roof replacements, plus the normal maintenance and preventative maintenance that Mr. Napier's team does at every building every year.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to recommend that we go ahead and move forward and have the staff give us their recommendations, because right now, we're kind of scrapping away from tasks, from your question, that is.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second other questions. Madam Clerk?
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Stewart? Vice Chair Brooksburg? I'm sorry, Vice Chair Byron?
Yes.
Board Member Jink- Johnson? Chair Brooksburg?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Thank you all. Listen, I, I want to make one last comment. One of the things that we want to do, because we don't want to give anybody the impression that we're trying to go off the rails here. When we look at what we have, the priorities that we have, if those priorities were taken care of, if we could finally get our warehouse finished, we could give up our property at Freney Avenue, we could give up our driver property. We don't need them. We're not trying to hold on to them. We don't want them. There's no use for them. That would be a plus for the city and a plus for us if we could get that finished, but we do need to get that finished. We're not trying to hold on to anything that we can't use. It doesn't do us any good. It doesn't help the city. So I just want people to keep that in mind. If we can work together to get some of these things done, there's also, if you're paying attention to the news on the national level, we've been working with, I know I've been working with and advocating for, and I've said this, the Rebuild America Project, the Rebuilding America Act, the plans to help to rebuild schools all over the nation. I've been advocating for it, lobbying for it, whatever you want to call it. And now that it's a possibility, please support that. Please help us with that. Support that. We can work together. We have some excellent grant writers in this school division. We really do, and we could work with the city so that we can help to get that done. Over this country, $500 billion is needed to repair and replace public schools. Suffolk isn't some raggedy city that's not doing what it's supposed to do. It's happening all over the city. Our public schools are in bad condition, and 90% of America's students go to public school. We need to work together to get that accomplished, and if we could do that, it might help defray some of these costs. So let's keep that in mind, not challenging each other, not sparring with each other, but working together. We can get this done. Thank you, everyone, for coming this afternoon. Thank you for working together. We're going to do the best we can to get this done. Have a blessed, blessed evening. That is the close of our business.
You said. You voted for it.
Yeah, my understanding of the motion was to allow the staff to come tonight to make some recommendations to the board. I, I think that's what.
Okay, so you want, that, I'm sorry, I was confused. I thought you were going to allow the staff to do this. So you want the staff to sit here and figure it out tonight? Because you said something about time. Is that, was that your understanding and your, all of your understanding?
I guess the question becomes whether or not Dr. Gordon's staff is able to do that
We can provide an overview of what we are thinking based on not changing the order of priority and the potential years that these projects would occur. We are prepared to do that. We.
We can reopen the meeting, Mrs. Stewart. I suppose, could we not reopen the meeting?
The problem, the problem is in that the meeting has been closed. In order to reopen the meeting, it's going to be a new meeting, which means you have to get notice of that.
That's all right. You'll share it with staff tomorrow? Would the board, since, since this is, and this is just a poll, this is not a vote, would the board be willing to do that? I'm sorry, I was under the impression that that's what we were doing, and I think some of the others were under the impression that's what we were doing. But if that is not what we're doing, we'd have to reopen again, and we'd have to advertise again and do whatever. We don't want to violate FOIA. Thank you. So you're going to put that in, okay? Mr. Wall, hope it would be necessary for us to put that in and share with the, with board members. Do we need to call another meeting, or would we have to do that in October?
You would need another meeting. You would, you would need another meeting. If you want to do it in your meeting in October, you can, but.
We'd have to do another one.
You're going to need another meeting.
Okay, okay. Okay, we'll do that at the October meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.